My cell phone's off.
Okay.
I got my cellphone once today. A little late. Roger's not gonna be here, but he had something to talk to Randy about real quick. It didn't involve any of us. So, should we... I'll give you a... What time is it? Two... 2:08. Today is Friday, January 31st, 2020. And this is a work session from our township board to discuss strategic planning for the upcoming years. Roll call, Randy?
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Marx.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Rattar is here, and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Manager Gerard will be here. He'll be here in a few minutes.
I have made a bunch of, well, not a bunch, but quite a few changes or recommendations to mine. And I was gonna do it online. Were you gonna bring this up and make changes today on the computer? Was that gonna be the thought?
Oh, we can. I can. Dave emails it to me.
What? You've got a scare block.
I can.
About a week ago, you said, "If you send me this, I'm gonna make changes and send it back to you."
Yes, I know. I know I did. That's what I was apologizing for. I got him on here.
So I quit doing anything.
But I didn't do anything on the computer. I'm sorry. I'll be so glad when this whole nature crap is done.
Wait a minute.
If you want us to email it to me, I'll put it right on here.
We don't have to. Maybe nobody else has any... Some of them, some of these things are just typos too. And I'm adding a few words or subtracting a few.
Well, do you really care about typos right now?
Yeah, I did have, um... Two things that I think we should add to what you've recommended. I think you did a great job of it, absolutely, coming up with things and remembering. I just had the question on the roof, the ice rink roof, which is what we've already talked about. That's the only thing I added before. And something to fix the road off of... Off of Brookton. Um, I have had people, numerous people over the years, last few years, saying, "You know, I like to use that road behind Starbucks, but it's a mess." And you've heard me mention to Randy a few times, "Can we get, um, more dirt dumped in there or something?" So, I would like to see us at least have a discussion on what to do about that road. Okay. So those are the only things I added to the list of things to talk about.
I'll print this out, too.
Anybody have any, um... I had a couple of things that I...
Amended, yeah.
Had, um...
121 or something.
21, yeah.
Some questions or issues on the SWOT analysis. What do you, what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna go through page by page? Or do you have something you wanna talk about special?
I went through and laid out my thoughts and that, and then I went back and looked at Dave's. And we were pretty well crossing the line on a lot of things, but there were a number of things that we've talked about. One of the, I call it the senior center or senior day at the township. Something going on here for the citizens.
Pete would like to do something like that, too.
Yeah, Pete brought that up.
Does anyone else, I can print a copy back there if anyone else needs the amended copy. Does anyone else need the amended copy? Okay. It's nice of what I have to print.
One of mine are long-term. I probably never see them. Another one is from 550 through Forestville Road up to that way, take that route. That's a new route. There's been some discussion of that.
You mean connect up, come out of Forestville and go on up to 550?
Yeah.
Yeah, bypass.
Not going to 41, going that way. That would be something to think about.
That might even be beyond us. You know, Randy and I have talked about that quite a few times.
I agree. I probably will never see that.
Yeah.
Because I talked to Jason a little bit about that, too, so I can get a map on that, too. Another one I had, and we've talked about it, we have to do something with Water West on 492 to open up that land development somehow, or if we wanna go that way. That's long-range planning and that, if you wanna go that way and that.
But on the same thing as that, Ernie, if, you know, further down the road, if we can expand that area to hook up with the Gani, because, you know...
Either way, either ask for help or come out.
They got a couple of wells they're not using, and they all, they got good water.
But these are things I just gone through and I was writing down as I thought of them and that, too. Another one is some kind of a long-range plan for bringing businesses to the township. Should we get involved with that, development of that, or anything else like that? That's something else to think about, that, too. Another one is, uh, we need to address what, we have to protect the township from an annexation. And Dave addressed that somewhat in what he said in that. Communication to review and continue to review our communications with the township residents. Dave talked about water and sewer projects in the future, long-range and that. And look at all the land that we currently own in the township and develop a plan for it. Either sell it, keep it, or develop it, one or the other and that. Another one, and looking through a lot of the documentation I get, zoning for senior housing. Going back in time, there was, there was a something, and I don't know what magazine we got, but the, uh, the front of the houses were on the inside, and the outside was, were around it, where the cars going in, parking and that. On the inside was the place where they could walk and have activities and everything else. And you can sit on the porch and that. There were no roads on that that they could look at. It's a whole different environment, looking at it in a different way, and that, too, so... And that seemed to be something that I thought was worthwhile when I saw it years ago and that. How that go, would go, I don't know. And four questions I laid out right at the beginning. What do the residents, what do the residents want in the township? What do they want in that? What would they like to see in the township? What would make the township a designated place to be? And what would the town, what would make the township a place to create and/or develop a business, build a home, or move to the township? These are awful big questions and that. How much we can address, I don't know. These are things to think about, that, too, so...
That's where you get your public input sessions and when you have your meetings, right?
Do we want, did everybody kinda come up with one or two things, or... Because what I was gonna say is, do we wanna just add them to the list?
I sent a letter with...
And then talk about it? Okay.
Well, yeah, he did.
Instead of us doing a big board, you know, with the pen and flipping charts and stuff?
John sent a letter with him and Dan Wayne and everything. It was fine, so...
Okay. So, nothing else to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
You've done so much work on it. You really did an outstanding job, and you should be commended for that. And I know John did commend you for it, and everybody else, and thank you.
Well, I just don't want anybody to think that there are things needed to be added to the list there.
You put a lot of time in it. I'm glad you've got that kinda time.
Yeah, me, too.
I heard that kinda tell.
Did anyone look at this last planning and zoning news? Did you read it? Did you read that portion of aging in places and everything else?
Twenty-one counties, over 50. Yeah.
And the governor is, uh, North Michigan is the first state in the Midwest and fifth in the nation to become age-friendly, providing outdoor spaces, et cetera, all the way down the line, things like this here.
It's not the state that's zoning so many communities. The state's not doing much of anything.
She hasn't done anything about it.
Well...
We might have a road plan now, so...
I know, but that's what written up, so you have to pull my...
Yeah.
But you'd be sad if you look at the road plan. This whole does nothing for you to be eight miles, 70 miles, and you can maybe be...
Like on threats, I had two items on threats.
Well, let's not jump around. Let's try to stay.
I'm trying to keep my mind...
Hurry up.
What I was gonna say is, um... Actually, my first question would be, would you want to, and I think we could do it ourselves, because Jason has proven himself to be pretty effective at it, would you wanna try to have another questionnaire go out the way we did it a few years ago? Not have to pay the company?
Just do it ourselves.
Because that was 10,000 plus.
Didn't we just do that?
It's been quite a few years.
No, the planning commission just did one.
Yeah, we did it in-house, though.
It hasn't, it was done in-house. It really hasn't gone anyplace yet because it was used for the master plan.
Yeah, that's true. It probably has enough information in it.
If it's been used for the master plan, it's probably got enough stuff there for the...
That's probably, yeah.
Strategic plan, yeah.
Because they're all supposed to tie together, right?
Yeah. Well, so then maybe we just need to have a conversation about the master plan because it's not approved yet, and we're gonna have to look at it anyway.
Yeah.
And see if it's still kinda...
I think if you wanna take the, if you, you wanted to take the, uh, questionnaire that was put out, the survey that was put out, and I think was put out last year.
It's 18.
And take the results of that and just see where they fit in the, uh...
How, how it fits.
In the SWOT.
Yeah. Okay. Instead of trying to recreate, that's all I was thinking.
Yeah, I think we actually already did that. See if there's anything in there, because I would think the whole intent here was to take this SWOT analysis and get everybody's thoughts on there and just whittle it down. Obviously, you can't do everything that's even on there now. So just whittle it down and get a presentation, so when you have your first public meeting that they can come in and add to it or take away from it, or... But we're really not gonna decide anything here. We're just gonna put a list together and then pair the list down to the, to the top, what, four or five in each category?
Okay, so you wanna go, let, let Ernie keep going on his...
I threw, I threw a lot out there, so...
Did you keep it for yourself, or did you send it to Dave?
I just, I've been writing these down for last week as I think things and that, too, so... I can, I can type them up and send them over to you.
I don't care. You gotta remember, I'm not trying to take this over.
No, no, I'm sorry.
The only reason I put this together is because Randy sent out the, the la- last strategic plan, and I just figured that would be a good place to go in and start editing from, and that's where all this came from, I think.
I think he did an excellent job.
It just seemed to have a better thing if we could throw it up on the screen and everybody go from the same piece of paper.
All right, let's start with this one, then.
Can I get rid of mine because I screwed up and never sent it to Dave?
I would take, the only people that haven't, I would just take the ones that everybody's got. If they wanna clarify them and just put them on here and just look at all of them and send them out to everybody and just pick it apart.
He heard us mention his name. Two or three of us have turned it up.
I've got it bugged in here, so...
Got it what?
I've got it bugged in here, so...
Okay, you knew we were talking about you?
No, I just stopped in. I know this is the first meeting regarding your, uh, you know, this type of discussion. Do you want me here, or would you just react to what you guys do, as you do it?
Well, as long as you're here.
Sure.
As long as you're staying here.
We were just talking about this survey that was done, the planning commission did.
Yeah.
For the master plan.
Yeah.
And that would seem to me that we need to distribute that to the board so they can look at it. And rather than doing another one for the, for the board, just use that because it's, all this is supposed to tie together with the master plan anyway.
Correct.
So, I, I think if we had that survey and we had everybody's thoughts and put them on the same presentation. If you only emailed the SWOT analysis to everybody and have everybody's line out the ones and try and whittle it down to the, to the top four or five in each category.
That's what I was kinda hoping to do today.
But we don't have everybody's stuff.
No. They can...
We're missing, we're missing Ernie's, we're missing Pete's.
You got my thing.
Randy, you gotta...
No, well, we can fix, we'll do it on here. They can comment.
Yeah, they're fine.
It doesn't have to be in this format. We can just type it in and put it up there right now, is what I was hoping to do. That's why I asked you if we could do this.
We can, yeah.
We can.
We can.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with what's there.
So let's just look at the SWOTs. That's what I was kinda hoping to accomplish today. And if somebody had something, like I said, I had a couple to add to the goals. Fix that road behind Starbucks was one that I said. And then we'd already said, do something with the roof of the ice rink. So those are discussion items, you know, if we wanna pursue them in the future. But I was hoping to go through the SWOT analysis today. But looking at the master plan, because I went through the rec plan, I've already seen that, made my comments. We haven't seen the master plan yet. So that would be a good tool to have, then, before we have to look at it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Before we have a deadline and...
In most cases, if you're following along with your community survey and addressing those issues, you're never gonna go wrong. And then you can, obviously, you're gonna have some that are outside of the, the view of, you know, layman resident that you need to address, like strong infrastructure, revenue generation, those type of things. I will immediately distribute the survey to all of you via Eagle.
Okay.
And then I'll...
Do you have workable master plan that we can look at yet?
Yeah, in a draft form, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send that along, too.
Okay.
So both those items, and then as you need me, just let me know and be happy to sit in and assist as needed.
Well, the master plan's kinda thick. As opposed to looking at the master plan, what if we just all got the goals and objectives? Because that's what everybody's looking at, right? I mean, because it, the rest of it gets kind of verbose there, just...
Yeah, demographic data.
Demographics and all that stuff, that I don't think...
Sure.
You don't read that.
I don't, you want that for the strategic plan stuff.
Basically, you just need the headings.
I mean, I, I don't see any big problem with sending it all out, but I think it's easy to get a nap in while you're reading.
Okay. Randy, you had your hand up a minute.
Yeah, just a, just a, just a comment to think about. And I would suggest that before you jump on the master plan, you might wanna look at the survey results because your opinion and the planning commission's opinion may not be the same.
Right.
But that contributed to the plan, right?
Well, but you, you don't know, you might see things on that survey that are different than what the planning commission thinks need to be done. So all I'm suggesting is, is that you should have the same basic information. You should see that survey so you can pick out the things that you believe are in the best interest of the township as compared to what your planning commission. They may not be the same. And if you're going down different roads, now would be the time to pull those two roads together.
Well, you gotta know what the planning commission was looking at that for.
Right.
They were looking at it for zoning information, future zoning maps and
Land use.
Land use and that type of stuff, and that's, there's a whole lot more on here besides land use.
Yeah, and just, just by example, your comment about the road behind Starbucks. Before you decide the road, you have to decide what you're doing with the five acres. And you haven't done that yet.
Yeah.
You may not want a road there.
Well, we've got a usable road, and I'm getting complaints all the time that it's not usable.
It's not a usable road. It's a private drive.
Yeah.
You own on your property.
But people wanna use it because it's there.
Not a usable road, so...
And they're tired of it.
The point that I'm trying to make is, before you decide whether that's gonna be a road or not, you need to decide what you can do with the five acres, because if you're gonna sell it, you don't want a road on it. And that's why it's a private drive, is because you own it and control it. And if it goes away today, that's your decision.
You might wanna build right up to the...
And we've already said that we wanted to not do anything with that land for a while, so that's, I wanna decide.
But the main reason that you did that road is to provide an access to Starbucks. Well, the Ronbogs have done that, uh, could be on 41. So do you still want to have that driveway? Because people aren't using it the way it was intended to begin with. It's not a two-way road. It's supposed to be in one way, out one way.
In the future, you might have a roundabout there, too.
But I mean, those are the kinds of things that you need to think about looking forward, you know? And that's one of the things. What are you gonna do, I think, Ernie mentioned, what are you gonna do with the property that you own? Well, some of it, you're not gonna touch, ever, the stuff along the boundary. You're not gonna do anything with it. You're not gonna develop it. You're gonna keep it just as it is, under your control, because that's your wall, if you were, if you would. Five acres, we talked about that. We've got ten lots down on Warner Street. We've got various pieces of property around the township that some decisions need to be made about what you wanna do with.
If you had put together for me one of, a map that had all that on there, so we could share that with the board, like... Okay, yeah, Pete, you have your...
I wanna ask her, Jason is here. I got one over here. I got, um, Brookton Road widening it up and make it turn into a business district.
Good luck with that.
No, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, he's not gonna have the property forever, but, I mean, is that a good space because of the hotels and that on this side, in that area there? Or is it gonna be bothersome to the people who built the houses on the south side? I don't feel that's gonna be a problem. I don't know. But that area there, you're looking for businesses within our business district.
Well, the future land use plan on the north side of Brookton Road shows that as being commercial in the future.
That shows...
So any rezoning application that were to come through would be supported by the future land use map.
Shows that all is development district. It's currently residential, right?
No, it's developed, well, it's, you guys need some maps because you have these discussions, too, to be able to really look at stuff.
What about the property west of Loews and that, on both sides? There are only a couple of houses on the right-hand side.
Probably owned.
I know that, but if that ever comes up, can we get more property so that people can build on the, on the north side of that highway?
The only way you can do that is to own it.
I know, that's what I'm just saying.
The future zoning on that shows that it's development district, not on that.
So we're right there.
Yeah, we're, we're really zoned well.
And then the, uh, the west side of that access drive back to Myers shows the future of that is general business?
Yeah.
So there's room for some development on the west side of that road.
Yeah, by my estimation, we have around 100 acres of commercially developed, developable property.
Right.
And road from, uh, US 41 to 492, now that wasn't a plan before Walmart was here, when Walmart was here, but, you know, is there another way of getting back to 492? Yeah?
That'd be, that'd be a hard one.
Yeah, these are all, all discussions that we've had before. So, I mean, the board just needs to prioritize really what things you wanna tackle within whatever the timeframe of the, of the strategic...
I had frontage on road, but that's too, too late now. I had street lighting, but that's what we talked about all the time. 550 to 41 access, Ernie brought that up. And zoning problems west of Loews. Water project 492, hook up with the Gani. Recreation on the well road, we talked about cutting from Enchantment Road back over to this way somehow, in the future. I got reduced, uh, talking about housing and affordable housing, and I got reduced the speed limit on County Road 553, or 550 should be, not 53. In the residential area, to come, like Sugarloaf and the house, and you start coming through a residential area. I had a note on there, two years ago, they tried to get that down because they're going too fast by the residential area, not just looking, is that an area that could be developed into homes and that? Another crazy thing, I got telescope on top of Sugarloaf, but that was...
They're actually, um, so I've been meeting on a little subcommittee with some representatives from the county planning commission, or county planning department. And there's a proposal to create a new parking lot for Sugarloaf with a new trail that ties into, because obviously you go out there on a busy summer day and there's cars along 550, which is a huge safety risk. So they're moving forward with that this year with general fund money. What I just reviewed this morning was a grant application to Eagle for a turn lane and then a bypass lane because obviously the trucks that are coming through there pose a pretty good risk to pedestrians and whatnot. So as a, as a component of that, they're putting a 360-degree webcam on top of Sugarloaf.
Just under infrastructure, I just got water, sewer, roads, and lighting. Affordable housing, business district, north, south, east, and west, Brookton Road. Lighting, what else was it? A walkway along Commerce Drive up here. I asked Dave this morning, if I, if I put a bar in the mall, restaurant bar, can I have alcohol with the church being there?
Well, um, the church should be separated from that building.
No, they're gonna have a walkway right into the mall, I said. That's what I heard, but that's the reason I asked it.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to come to a head on that one because they're demoing inside. I don't know if they've purchased or if they're gonna lease it. But even if it's a lease over a year, it warrants a land division. If it's a separate, you know, if it's a new ownership of that and they create a new use, change the use category, then because it's an assessor's plat in the Michigan Land Division Act, it says that you have to separate those uses. And I think Roger has already provided a pretty lengthy opinion on, on that. So that includes buffer yard, bringing the parking lot and lighting up to grade. They have to demonstrate that they have frontage on a public road, which is challenging. So, yeah, that's...
The 300 and 500 feet, I forget which one it is, but is that to the door of, say, the, the door of the church? Or does it encompass the front of the mall?
300 feet for like a hydrant location?
No, to the front, you're not allowed to put, I have liquor and within, so many of a church, schools, so...
Oh, sure. Um, I, I don't know. That's probably a state mandate.
Well, how would that work in, in a closed building?
Yeah.
Right.
Is it from the front of the mall or inside?
That, that standard is between buildings.
Yeah.
You know, distance, separated distance, and, you know, if you're inside the same building, does that, does that apply? Does the church then have to have a liquor license for the wine? I mean, it's all kinds of that.
Are they really a church?
Are they really a church? You know, I mean, who knows? But, but those are all items that are out of your control. Speed limits are outside your control. The kind of licensing is outside of your control. You know, the zoning issue with that is outside of our control. It's all under state law for the, for the, uh...
Enforced by us, but yeah, those are all things that happen, the minutia of just everyday zoning work that you guys don't have to worry about.
A lot of the things, you know, developing housing on 550, if you're gonna develop, uh, housing on 550, you have to develop infrastructure on 550. Uh, we have no way to get there.
That's what I thought with that road, to cut it across, it might, you have given area that people might wanna build, make it safe. And just in our office structure here, you know, I mean, you can have it marked on.
You have to do that, and then you have to get across the Deverre somehow.
Well, we've got...
That's always been an obstacle.
We've got utility up to the driveway of Karen Woods, where John's at. So as, as long ear divests of their property just north of that, we've already rezoned that for residential.
Residential.
Yeah, we took that out of, uh, resource production, knowing that they were gonna eventually dish that off, and we're set up for that.
It's on the cusp of drainage, water, and sewer.
Yeah.
It's right at the...
With, uh, within a, stone's throw.
Well, and just for the office building here, I think, I marked on, storage, improve the, uh, handicap entrance into the township, office security. We should have some training on first aid and stuff like that. And also, if we ever fall in some money, we can redo this corner here and change that because it's not set up right for, because we're always like this, you know?
Well, I...
Lynn should be sitting on, on the very end so she can see all of us instead of, you end up with your neck pulled out.
Yeah, just like, just like sister.
Don't forget the audiovisual equipment in the community room, too.
Yeah. Well, we wanna do that and add on to the community.
It's already been approved.
Now you're getting to the point that it's less expensive to build another building at a different site in addition to all those renovations to the basement because you essentially have to rebuild this building to handicap access, security. This building is not suited to any of that.
Well, you can have a door, you know, you can have it in front of the mall, you hit a button, or in the middle, it's like, hit the button, door...
10,000 per door.
Huh?
10,000 per door.
It's only money.
But you gotta have eight doors.
Yeah. Randy, I look, I, I won't be here.
You've heard that before.
I only have to be taxed for another five, six years.
You're right, you know, it's simple to do that, but you have eight doors to have it, you know? So 10,000 a piece, you're pushing 100 grand. That's a roof on the ice rink.
Well, and you all made faces when I said to build a new building a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I was trying to give you the gambit
Yeah.
between not doing anything, building a whole new building.
And, you know, seeing from my standpoint as a township manager, I'm looking at it totally different than you folks are looking at, lighting and roads and all that stuff. The outer space in this building. You need to be thinking about replacing the township facilities. You need to be thinking about things like, how are you going to expand housing? Well, to expand housing, you have to expand water and sewer services. That means you need to connect the second, you know, phase two of the water on 492 because that's where your future housing development is.
Well, unless we go north.
Can't go north. Deverre was in the way. How are you gonna get across?
Well, we can if there's, you know, a developer wants to go there. It's not something we're gonna do.
There's 40 acres over here, but I'm talking down 492, you've got pushing 200... There's 40 acres over here, but I'm talking down 492, you've got pushing 200 acres of potential housing development.
Yeah, that's a good point, something we talked about in the office. If I remember right, the last strategic plan was really broad brush. So instead of diving in, you know, and drilling down to a lot of these topics, you just need to come up with something.
You need to come up with three realistic projects that can be accomplished in three to five years, is what you need to come up with.
But we need a 10 and a 20-year projection, too, which ties into the master plan.
Well, your long range would be adding on to the fire hall for a police department, you know, if you build up that far, just a wide sweep.
See, I don't think the strategic plan needs to look out 15 or 20 years, I think the strategic plan is short-term. The master plan already looks out 20, 25 years.
That's what I said, it ties into the master.
Your strategic plans, what are you going to accomplish over the next three to five years?
Right.
And that's going to be one or two, maybe three. And then every three to five years, that should be updated and adjusted. Correct.
Right.
Yeah, and the last three to five, the last three to five years major effort was local roads. And you've accomplished that.
Done.
John, what are your, what have you been waiting patiently?
I think, listening to everybody, I think we have a plan. To use whatever information we have, existing surveys, results, et cetera. And then pass that on and determine, have the board determine which of the results of that, that they want to consider further. Then if possible, add a cost, put a cost on it. And I think with that, we can go ahead and proceed. But we don't need to spin it anymore, I don't think. I think the board has made their, will make their choice using existing information we already have. I think.
If you go like two pages beyond that SWOT analysis.
Yeah.
There's a sheet that covers that one more. There you go. There's one up there now that covers all that, we just need to take the SWOT analysis and put it in there. And it's got all those things covered, it's cost and who's going to be responsible to make the.
And then when we prioritize them, that sends the information further back to everybody involved.
What's that?
And then if we put a price tag on it, we'll wake up to what that really means.
What we can actually do, huh? Well, you know, the one other thing you have to think about, I think it was Ernie who mentioned it, are the demographic, age demographics. Okay, right now, there's a big push for all kinds of recreation on the property in the township. Five years from now, maybe totally different, because the people that are really pushing it now are going to be at a point where they're not going to be dodging stumps on their mountain bikes and all that, they're going to be looking for something else. So what is it that they're going to be looking for that the township can address in the next three or five years?
And I think we need to be careful about how we ask, what is it they want? What is it they're willing to pay for as well? You know, because if you don't become honest with them at the beginning, you're going to end up with a mess.
Well, you need to, you need to phrase your questions in such a way that you're getting input on what it is, not necessarily they want today, but where do they want to be in about the next five years, because it's going to be a different answer. And that's what you need to work towards, is what that answer is going to be.
Let's take recreation, for example. Are you willing to have a recreation added back? You know, as soon as you ask that, people back off. And I think we need to know, where are that momentum at? Is it really serious? Are people willing to, to ask for exotic things in recreation? But are they willing to pay for it? No.
Survey says yes.
Yeah, Dave?
Well, I just think that we need to narrow our scope a whole lot.
Yeah, I agree.
If we just, if out of this meeting and the next work session, we narrow down the SWOT analysis to things that everybody can agree on that are important. And then after that's done, and in order to do that, you need a copy of the survey that was done. So I would suggest that if those who haven't turned in anything in, haven't done their homework, turn it in, I'd be more than happy to add it to the SWOT analysis and just send out those pages to everybody. So you got something to look at, along with the survey that was done through the planning commission, and look at those two things, and clean it up what you think, and narrow it down to five in each one of those categories.
Well, we still need some input on the actual, oh, page you had up there, that showed the action items.
But we need to narrow down the SWOT analysis first.
Yeah, but they may not be the same. Just because you have a weakness doesn't necessarily mean it's something you can address for the next three or five years.
But if we narrow down our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and all that, then that is going to drive the goals and objectives. That's going to determine what you need for a goal to satisfy what we see as our.
But having a discussion about the five acres in the road doesn't, doesn't pertain to the SWOTs. It's something outside of that.
That's really not even a strategic decision.
Right.
Well, whether we want to do something with selling.
You can put that in the wish list, like a lot of ones I just named, it might be a wish list, and you could always have a copy of it in some, some future thing you might, right? We should look at that or something, you know?
That's how the ice rink discussion came up. That wasn't a strength, that wasn't a SWOT, it was just a discussion.
We talked about buying the school property over the garage and that.
Yeah.
Do you think that ever happened? Think the school ever released that? No. So what's the next thing if you wanted to advance that Lions Field, there are a couple of houses in our way.
Right, so that kind of stuff should be on a discussion point somewhere.
Yeah.
It doesn't fall into the SWOT analysis, it would go on the strategic action page, and then we decide. That's how we did it last time, then we decide if it's stuff we want to address, if it's an issue.
Well, if you want to send your stuff in, you can go it on, okay, not this, not this, you know?
Well, and that's what.
Include those as an appendix to your.
He kind of, you know, it's a long-range thinking, too. What do we, what do we want to focus on?
Here's what we're focusing on, however, as a result of discussion, these other items were also brought up that didn't make the cut, but should be considered in the future, if and when feasible.
Well, if you look under our strengths and look at recreational opportunities, most of what we're talking about would fall under recreational opportunities.
Yeah.
All that ice rink roof and all that, that actually falls underneath that. So it would be easy to go from that to a goal and objective that could cover any one of those items. Depending on where you think which one's important, which one hits the top of the list, or which one hits something that is conceivable in the next five years.
Yeah, but long-range planning isn't that, it's, it's like some of the stuff that we talked about, it belongs to the rec group, the rec committee, the road committee, and then they can put it on their agenda, you know, so it's not in the long-range plan that we want to deal with in the next five years.
That should come from the board.
It would come from us first, yeah.
You give them their marching orders.
We give the direction, they don't come up with this on their own, that's where we've, we've missed the mark a few times in the last few years. Go ahead, Randy.
But again, it gets back to strategic thinking, and the question of strategic thinking is, okay, we're talking about recreation, putting $100,000 roof on the ice rink. Does it make sense to put $100,000 into a roof on an ice rink? That serves only a short time of the year for, you take that $100,000 and go to what Pete was talking about, and acquire the property that you want to designate as specifically bed range housing. And market it from that standpoint, that mean? Those are the strategic thoughts that you need to, if you want to increase tax base and you want to increase population, you have to be in a position to control where that happens. So how are you going to spend your money? Spend $100,000 to do this and put a roof on, or you can spend $100,000 to buy 30, 40, 50 acres of land to develop in housing. Those are the strategic, the ways you need to look at this strategically in terms of where do you want to be in five years or 10 years?
You're suggesting that we buy it, now we become developers, we had this discussion 12 years ago.
You buy it, and the only way you can designate a use of property is to own it.
Right.
So the property Pete was talking about west, that Jason was talking about, has been designated as general development. You have absolutely zero control of what gets built there, none. Property out on 492, you have absolutely no impact on what that's used for, whether it's a dog park, or whether it's a gas station, or whether it's a convenience store, or whether it's 50 houses, unless you own it. So all I'm suggesting is you need, from the long-term strategic point of view, recreation isn't it, you've got recreation coming out of your ears. Question is, what's that recreation demand going to be in five years? Is it still going to be biking and hiking, or is it going to be something else? If you want tax base, you have to plan, how are you going to develop the township? And the only way you can develop it is to own the property that's being developed and determine how it's going to be used.
And your return, I mean, if you're going to invest money in recreation, what's the return on your investment? Return, if you're investing in infrastructure, hopefully you're going to have houses in there and you're going to get tax dollars back to pay for the services that were given out.
But unless you own the property that's going to be served by the utilities, you can't, you cannot determine what it's going to be used for. Right next door to Peltor's property, there's 127 acres ready to be developed for housing, but it has no water, it has no sewer.
Well, I believe in.
North of John.
I believe in getting the utilities to an area, but zoning is really what sets up what gets developed. So you can have an overlay district that says, hey, in this area.
Yeah, but if you have your infrastructure there, Jason, the advantage of building a house in that area, they got water and sewer, that would be a lot better than if it didn't have anything.
Well, and that's the main point to take away, okay, is you're not going to have development unless you get utilities to those areas. Because no developer is going to extend utility main down 492.
Correct.
It's not cost effective.
And if the zoning is already established, that's, if it's rural residential, that's what you're going to get.
But if you can demonstrate that, okay, well, if X, Y and Z are built in this section of land, and it costs this much to get the utility there, and if that's fully developed and generating X, then that would cost, or cash flow your utility project.
It looks like the planning commission has done a good job as far as zoning and thinking ahead of time.
Yeah, that's all, everything on 492 is all zone rural residential.
And also up this way and that way, it seems like they're all taken care of.
Right, see, we're in a different situation than the city next door. The city can levy up to 22 mils without a vote. You're capped at five, unless the residents vote in extra voter vote.
We're at 3.
We're at 4.9 or something, because it rolls back, rolls back with Edley. And you right now have 2.8 mils for fire, you've got millage for law enforcement, you've got a mill for the library, you've got, you've got millage after millage after millage, how far a resident is going to go? The only way you're going to develop a cash flow, as Jason said, is to have additional development. And what you want is housing development, that brings people into the community.
It's sustainable in the long term.
Absolutely.
You got 20-year big box stores.
They're going to be vacant here soon.
I would be going after light industry, research and development, and high tech.
We talked about that for years.
Yeah, we saw what's happening in Askinaboo.
We had that discussion at the planning commission level with regard to Northern Michigan University's medical marijuana program. If they own property in the township, wouldn't it be cool to have some kind of synergy between NMU and ourselves to develop a research center or a testing center somewhere in the community that brings in great jobs? And, you know, these, these retail stores are 20 years, and in the case of Gander Mountain, it's five years. It would be nice to have some other industries that aren't, I mean, we need to retail too in some cases, but some of these other industries that are much more, have a lot more longevity and are sustainable.
What you don't need is non-tax generating entities like.
Churches up here.
Huge church in your mall.
Well, you can't discriminate against that.
No, I understand, I understand.
Not ideal situation.
Who's next, Dan? We're not going to have smokestacks, so you have to go high-tech, someone that can operate in a smaller building.
Yeah, smokestacks are going away.
I've been waiting way too long to talk to you to have you run away.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And my questions are quite simple, I guess, maybe I was never informed, but whatever happened to the Irish whiskey place?
Um, that's a capital issue, he needs capital.
So it's a non-issue?
Well, he's got investors, but he wants to start off smaller than what we were talking about before. You know, he talked about doing out of his house, which I told him he can't do. But then we could, we could right-size him somewhere.
Build a still?
Right. I don't think the project's dead, Dan, by any means, but I think that it's just on hold.
It's a slow growth.
Yeah.
And secondly, you brought up Gander Mountain, I was having breakfast this morning, and one of the topics was, what do we have to do to get a sporting goods store in here? Have you had discussions with any people?
Yeah, yes.
I mean.
It's going to be revised quickly.
Corporate problems that made these stores pull out, or?
It's at the corporate level, it's not us.
I know, but what do we have to do to get a, get a, what was it, Dunham's? Dunham's, get that back up here?
Yeah, well, I don't do that, per se, the market drives all that stuff. Dunham's is interested in the Westwood Mall, they would like to take the Yonkers location, but there's asbestos in tile at Yonkers. So somebody's got to foot the bill to remove that, to make that ready to use again. There's also one of the gyms, you know, there's so many gyms in town, but it was, it was a more of a franchise type of gym.
Fleet farm?
Anytime Fitness?
Okay, yeah.
Or no?
It's across the shop, oh no.
It's larger than that.
Yeah, like LA.
Not World Gym, but like something like.
LA Fitness like thing.
Anyway, and that's what you're going to see happen at the mall, if they don't knock it down and redo the whole thing, you're going to see an influx of different land uses, other than retail, being incorporated into the mall. Which is great, and that's what the national trend is right now, because malls, that model is gone. The only type of commercial retail developments that are being continuously proven to be successful are these little strip malls that you pull up to, you walk along the front, and there's a number of stores. I mean, I think Up the Sky would do really well here as well, with the water park and everything. But I'm losing confidence in that project, we've been, you know, excited about that when we first heard it in 2012, and here we are eight years later, and there's just, there's nothing movement. And we've offered, you know, demonstrate that you have a, a contract in place with the hotel, which would trigger a tourism destination. That would allow us to apply for category A funds to help with water and sewer. So a lot of the developments that have happened in the township happened without any public, you know, public investment. And what, you know, Randy and I have been trying to stress, at least since I got here, was, let's use the tools we have in our toolbox to help development along. And in a lot of cases, if you do that, you really get quality developments that accomplish things outside of what a normal developer would want. Sidewalks and lighting, things like that. Which brings us to another discussion, because the DDA and how large it is, I mean, if it was a well-funded DDA, you could do so many projects that you want to do with connectivity of, you know, walkability, you know, driveways, roads, all of those things are capable projects of DDA. If you want to put a road back through Up the Sky and just say, hey, we've got three-part service with you, for you, we could create a TIF district, I mean, there's lots of different ways to, that's what we did to Ashland. Ashland was, there was a, we knew that there was a bunch of industrial, light industrial users that wanted to come in, so we built a road, we put water and sewer, electric, fiber. And then every time that a new development came along, the money that was taken in after, you know, with the increase in taxation, it was given back to that district, and then, you know, it takes a while for that to mature, as Randy would know, but those are incentives that I think the township should look at making, instead of just waiting for something to happen. Sometimes you have to get things installed so that you are a catalyst to development, and I think that that's.
You're sitting in a.
Within your purview.
You know, TIF built all of this infrastructure out here. But you know, in answer to Dan's question, yes, we have had discussion with large-scale, well, specifically Bass Pro Shop, Cabellas. We've had conversations with them, but we don't have the population to support it. They have the minimum population.
I mean, even a fleet farm, I mean, they've got an excellent sporting goods area in a fleet farm. I'd love to see them come up here, it's one of my favorite places to go, I don't even go to Cabellas or Bass Pro anymore, they just don't have what the average sportsman is looking for, unless you want some yuppie clothes or whatever, you know?
Oh, fleet farm or farm fleece is, is one of the groups that are looking at the old shop close.
And that's something that's outside of your control, Dan, because the Amazon effect is affecting all sectors of retail. That, that landscape is changing and. That landscape is changing, and that's why I say, as a community, focus on other industries. Diversify our portfolio in a way that doesn't rely on big-box retailers that come in and wanna slash their value to start.
Yeah. I'm old-fashioned, I guess. I like to see what I'm buying. You know, 'cause so many times I bought things online, and I get it, what the hell, I didn't think it was that big, or, you know, whatever.
Well, you have free return shipping if it was on Amazon.
Yeah, it's still a hassle.
Well, yes, you know, and Jason, you're absolutely right. What's killing a lot of the, a lot of business around here is there's nothing you have to have that you can't wait two days for. Because if you, I mean, I don't even buy dog food locally anymore because it's chewy. If I get on the phone today, make the place order chewy, I have it tomorrow. It's on my front porch, yep, dog food, whatever.
Mayor's idiots would love to come out to the township.
Yeah, I know. We've been talking with them for years, you know.
What do they need? What can we do in Curry's?
They currently have about 10,000 square feet. They would like to do, the city's made them do some crazy things with their adjacent parking lot, like screen it, all the hell. And, yeah, they would like to come out. I've had several conversations with Andy there.
Oh, they're tops of presidents, Joe.
He lives right in order. Yeah. I helped him with his garage project, and that led into a discussion about, you know, it'd be a lot cooler if I didn't have to go all the way to town.
So what do they need?
They need somebody to build them something that they can help design. Pito de Verro would be a great person to talk to. I put him in touch with Brad Crimmins, so... And, excuse me, this was just a couple of weeks ago, so... Sometimes those things take a while to take.
We do a lot of that. We do a lot of linking people, putting people together. We've been talking with those guys for over seven years, you know, in terms of, they really wanted to come out here. Dunham's, every time I would go through Suzannebury, I'd stop in and talk to the manager of Dunham's, who used to be the manager here. They want desperately to get back here, but corporate won't pull the trigger. They won't do it. Don't ask me why. I don't know what the issue is, whether it's space or whatever.
It's a common misconception that I hear, like, friends will tell me, like, why can't you bring a Trader Joe's here, Jason? You know, why can't you do that? That's not...
Why are you letting these people do that?
Why are you letting another, you know, discount tire store? That's gonna kill Willie as well. That's outside of all of our purview, because we've set it up for zoning.
They own the land.
They own the land, and the market drives what goes there.
They meet the requirements of their...
We shall approve, yeah.
And I guess that's the message I was trying to get to you is, is that if we want to make large-scale dollar investments, it should be in things that have a large-scale return, long-term, like housing, acquire properties like 127 acres next to Paltone. We haven't in there. I know the owners. You know, and they're not here vocal anymore. But that's, I mean, you know, 127 acres, you can throw 50 houses on that. No water, no sewer.
The only business we can control is the marijuana.
Yeah, you don't control that by burning.
Nobody's talking about that.
No, I mean, how many can come into your... That's the only business you can control right now.
Well, right now, you can restrict it. You can't really control it, because there are ways around it, but you can't restrict it.
Well, even so, Pete, let's say that the township allows both medical and adult recreational use. You're gonna allow that to occur in certain areas as long as it fits within these parameters that we put up, like, not within 500 feet of a school, or a church, or rehab center. Once you do that, though, you're saying, okay, well, on any of these properties, then that could occur with a special use permit. So even then, you're in control, but you're not, you know... Obviously, some of the uses that are more industrial in nature than commercial would need to be in an area. We have a very small section of industrial property in the township areas. That could be expanded, or a new district could be created, which broadens the horizon on what light industry actually means. Because there's a lot of light industry that is not the dirty, smokestack type stuff. It's more like what RTI does.
Dave?
What?
I had your light on.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I just shut it off. Okay.
I got one, I'm gonna say.
That's kind of the things that are facing you in the next five years.
Did you have an addendum?
His property is being sold.
I just wanted to briefly mean that medical marijuana or water recreational. It's coming.
Cash cow.
Very much.
Coca-Cola and Budweiser have taken out patents in Canada for cannabis-infused beverages.
Yeah, it's gonna be a huge industry.
Yeah, the tribe is right now looking in the Ganni Township.
I stopped there yesterday for the first time at that firehouse. There was 25 people in that little tiny house buying marijuana. They had to sit down and take turns to be waited on in the back room to buy whatever they wanted.
And understanding in the parking lot using it.
It's huge.
They are.
Absolutely, that, yeah, well, you can.
Yeah.
You know, and... Well, when prohibition ended, that was huge too, right?
It's amazing. I think that's gonna be a huge industry. I really...
In my view, and this is maybe a little bit different than Randy's philosophy, but, you know, snowmobiles, any way that you can generate revenue in today's economy, considering everything that's going on with revenue sharing, for instance, or the road debacle that we've been hearing about this week.
What revenue sharing?
Right. We really need to take care of ourselves. And in fact, once a quarter, all of the county planners, or who are planners in the county, we meet. And we met last night at the Ordock for a beer. We just share ideas and war stories about what we're dealing with. But one of the common themes is that, you know, we're always relying on Lansing for so much. Why can't we do more regionally between ourselves to reduce costs? And we've been talking about this for years too. You know, the water, what do you call it?
Treatment plant?
No, we talked about a recreation authority or a water authority, those types of cost-saving measures that, you know... The taxpayer has to be very proud of a legislative board at the local level doing those kind of things, or working on those kind of things. Even if they don't come to fruition right away. Just the very fact that, hey, the township boards are reaching across political boundaries to cost save, yeah.
Well, but again, you know, you're dealing in a state structure, and the state needs to step up and to change legislation that puts things on an even plane. Townships and cities are always gonna be, you know, they're gonna be concerned about annexation issues. Anytime you do those joint authorities for main things like water, police, fire, you have the threat of annexation. So the state needs to step up and change the laws to allow that to happen. And we run into that all the time. But the other thing that happens is, is that the voters keep putting the same people back in office that will not work with neighbors. You know, and it's starting to change somewhat. But every time we've, every time we've gone down that water authority route, and we get right to the end, and they always throw a third in the punchbowl, always.
Well, you gotta, yeah, there's gotta be some way to incentivize it, because, I mean, you had a 70% approval on your road taxation. And that's a huge project, and that's still, I still think that township carries momentum with that. So if you bring up another pretty, you know, big idea, you know, everybody I run into, for the most part, in the community, they're like, Jason, you guys are doing a great job. Your board's doing a great job. Whatever you got, you guys are always forward-thinking. You're always looking ahead. Can't say the same about things that I hear on the other side of the border over here.
Well, we struggle, you know. One of the things, Dan knows it. I mean, Chief Shanahan and I are trying to figure out, how do we, how do we staff to cover what our demand is gonna be? Because we're not the only ones that, around the state and the country, there are not enough firefighters. So I threw out the idea, what do we, look at something just like Traverse City has, Grant Traverse County. They've got a fire authority, three townships and a city.
Fire district.
Fire district, yeah. Well, it's Grant Traverse Metro Fire Department. You know, there's a, there is a singular chief, basically, of the, of the district, basically. And each township has a chief, that's a battalion commander. They respond to their own first, but then they've got all of the resources of the others that they're controlled to. That could work here.
But you have to incentivize them too. When we have $300 and $400 for the public works department for their on-call stuff, and it's like, what, 40 bucks, 35 bucks for an on-call for the firefighters?
Well, it's different.
There is no on-call.
It is different, but you still have to incentivize them somehow.
We don't get any on-call. There is zero on-call.
When they go in and they do their shift, when they get paid on-call.
Well, it's just an hourly rate.
Yeah, well, they're putting their lives on the line. And we're here arguing about 300, they, the utility people want 500 bucks to be on-call?
Well, you're talking about different things.
I realize that. I realize.
They are required to respond. It's different.
All the more reason.
Totally different.
If you're trying to bring people in, you still have to, it's no different with wages. If I have to pay 20 bucks an hour to get help, I gotta pay it. I don't care if minimum wage is five or not. You still have to incentivize your people, or you give them extra vacation, or you give them more responsibilities, or something. You give them promotion. You do different levels.
Then you need to have enough staff to cover the time.
Exactly, but you still, you can't tell somebody they're gonna get 10 bucks an hour to go out and fight a fire. I'm sorry, you can't do that for on-call. It's just not reasonable. All right, we're not doing anything here. I mean, we're talking, not a conversation.
Well, you have a great conversation, and you're generating ideas, and now you just need to pull...
We're on the same page with that. That's why we want to move towards full-time firefighters.
And I will say that...
It's still hard to get, too.
The way that municipalities are working together right now is leaps and bounds ahead of what it was 20 years ago, or 25 years.
10 years ago.
Or 10 years ago. It's really, really come 180 degrees around how it is. It's happening.
And some of that is, the people are more willing to talk to each other, too. Whether it's an authority-type setting or a district setting, it doesn't matter.
When I started with the city, I was the first volunteer fireman to go to a career department. I was a bastard stepchild for a long time, where they would talk to me. And slowly but surely, it moved forward. Then they finally would even start listening to a couple of ideas that I had, you know. And you gotta live with these people. But it's nowadays, it's unbelievable how this is working. I mean, I just shake my head and go, we tried 25 years ago to get this stuff to work. No way.
Well, Jason's comment is...
No, it's years. No way.
Jason's comment is the future. I mean, it is. Working together is the future. But you have to have governing bodies, and you have to have legislation that allows you to do that. You know, and that's why things like the Grant Traverse Metro Fire Authority has been in place for almost 30 years. And it works really well, because they've all agreed on a specific set of criteria on how they operate. You could do that same thing with law enforcement. You could do it with planning and zoning. You could do it with all kinds of things. But you have to be able to cross those political boundaries without threat. You know, and that is not there today.
Well, how many years ago in the Ganni Ishmee talk about bringing their fire department, police department closer to the line and have one department work across the...
Never, it never happened. Because the two communities couldn't get together on it.
Yeah, they were too bullheaded and...
Yeah, and we tried it with the recreation authority. We tried it with the water authority. You know, I've had conversations with Mike Angelie about switching from the sheriff's department to the city, because they have more offices, more cars, you know, and better coverage than what the sheriff's department does. But you just can't get past that annexation issue. You know, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, well, you're out of office next year, and your commission's gonna turn over in two years. You can't bind them, you know. So it's gotta be state legislation that changes the annexation.
Good luck.
Okay, yeah.
We will touch it.
Yeah, focus on things that you guys can control.
Yeah, we can do it. And that's why, I guess, taking our revenues, and, you know, like Jason said, taking our revenues and acquire, acquire the infrastructure and acquire the property to be able to direct what happens in that avenue the way we want it to go. Not necessarily the way the person who owns this piece of property here wants to sell it for 150,000. It's worth 40,000. And somebody buys it to knock the house down and put up two little houses. You know, we really don't have anything to say about. The only way to do that is control the property.
Other than zoning.
Yeah.
I'm not a real big fan of municipalities being developers, but I can see where, you know, that comment is relevant. The other way to do that is clearly to zone a piece of property or an area of property that, look, if we're gonna run utility down here, this is what's gonna be built here. Otherwise, it won't cash flow.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about us being the developer. I'm talking about us owning the property and controlling how it gets used.
We do that.
Well, you sell it to somebody to develop a PUD, or whatever it is. These are the criteria that you're gonna do on this property as a condition of the sale.
Okay, so we need to look at the SWOT analysis again?
Yep. The other, one thing I was gonna mention is, might be, might be interesting for you. You've done two major surveys. The planning commission just did one, what, how many years ago?
18.
In 18? 10 years before that, we did the last major one, the one that resulted in the road project. It'd be interesting to see how those two line up in terms of what the people still want from that original little town one. We've done the roads, we've done the fire, we've done a number of those other things. Now, how does the current survey correlate with that prior survey? And might give you a little better direction on the long-term where you're going.
And to save you some time, it's reflected in the goals and objectives, so...
Yeah, we already looked at that, and you see it in the master plan, goals and objectives.
Okay, if you wanna hand that out, or email it, or put it in our mailboxes or both, or whatever.
Yeah, I'll do both.
That would be good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Have a good weekend.
Glad you came in.
That's right, weekend, isn't it?
Yeah. Does anybody have anything they wanna add to the SWOT while we're here? We can stick on. It's just two pages.
On the threats, I think we have to identify annexation directly.
It used to be on there.
We're, I think we're, actually, we're in pretty good shape on that right now, because we've protected our boundary, South of Grove Street, all the way to 553. And, you know, and what they do to the north, there's such limited impact on us on the north side of it. The property's probably owned, backed right up against the development behind Econo. So there's really not much there that's of a threat. We're developed, we're developed along South Vandemum and along Grove Streets, and a very small impact there, south of us, that we're concerned about that was linked to the 2,400 acres the city owns.
Don't we only need just one property owner that could throw the wrench in the mix, though?
Where?
Some piece, you're saying, that's close. We're not totally protected.
Well, no, I'm talking, I'm talking on the north side of Grove Street.
Right, but you're saying we're not totally protected?
No, there's not much that can happen. There's nothing for the city, there's no reason for the city to try and annex that up there, because there's nothing to gain.
But it doesn't have to be the city, per se. It could be a landowner if we don't have them, right?
But why would they wanna increase their taxes by going?
Well, what does the villa do? Didn't we have the same issue on Grove Street?
On Grove Street, what do you mean?
Yeah, with the boundary line in that house, that particular house.
About the water, sewer, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean at the end of the line?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, that was resolved, we own that now, I mean, we own that connection. It was the city, the city had a line that ran into the township that was stubbed off. We joined with that and we now own it.
So didn't everything do with the house itself?
No. No, what I was referring to is south, you know, along our Well Road. The city has an easement across the golf course that butts up against our property. They cannot get across our property to the 2,400 acres for future development or annexation as long as we own that strip of property for the area wide.
Aren't they trying to sell that?
Which?
That 2,400 or a portion of it?
Oh, they're trying to do all kinds of things with it, but right now, it's all designated as recreation use, so it's off the tax roll, so we're watching it real closely. If they put it up for sale for some other use, it's going back on the tax roll. But the only way they can develop it is to get city utilities to it, and the only way they can do that is across the property that we own. So if that property ever gets sold, you'll lose that control.
And they have a problem because they're required to get more money than they paid, or less, more money than they paid for it if they wanna sell it.
They've resolved some of that problem by paying off the bond, they've got off that bond off, so they now own it clear, so it's whatever they, whatever they can do with it, and they're in a spot where they need to do something with it.
That's the same problem they had sans township too, that line down there.
We're going back to annexation at Villa Capri, back in the 90s. They wanted to go into the city because of additional police protection.
Yep.
They did that, and then they got the first tax bill, and they came, and they said, we wanna come back in the township now.
Well, as it sits right now, half that building's in the city and half of it's in the township.
Yeah, I know. He said, no.
Careful what you ask for, you might get it, you know, that kind of thing. But, yeah, you know, and on the north side, I guess what I was referring to is, on the north side, Steve Pelto owns that remaining property on the north side, and truly for housing development, but it doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it's just that, it's that one little open area, once you get to, what's the circle? No, I think it's, I've got Specter stuck in my mind.
Grandview.
What is it?
Grandview.
Grandview. Once you get to Grandview Circle, that's all us on our water system and everything else, so that can't be annexed. Even if the residents wanted to, they don't have standing to petition for it. There's no, there's no standing there.
So you're saying it's not important to have annexation on the threat side?
Well, I think annexation, yeah, well, yeah, definitely sounds the threat side, but right now, we're in good condition on that, but there have been times where board members have wanted to sell off that property or develop the property along the Well Road. That just opens the door for somebody else to own that property and then sell it to somebody else eventually, and now you've got the avenue into the 2,400 acres that can be annexed simply then by a resolution in the city council.
Well, we know that, because, I mean, that's what we did.
Yeah, so that's why that property should never be even discussed in terms of sale.
All right, so we might as well just not try to do this today.
Well, I think you've got a good thing to do, I think you have a good thing to do in terms of looking at the SWOT houses, coming up with what you think in conjunction with the survey, is where you think something you might be able to accomplish over the next three or five years and target those as your goals for that timeframe, and then most likely, they're gonna track with what the master plans show, because they're predicated on the surveys.
Okay.
Just how you refine those goals and objectives, what you're going to actually do. That's the sheet that you had up there with the assignments, that's how you determine what's gonna be done, who's gonna do it, and what's your timeframe. So I think you have got a good start, I think you've got a decent start.
Are we gonna put the rest of these ideas together so we can all take a look at them?
I think that'd be a good idea. I'll try and type mine up and ship them over, and you can either look at them or throw them away or-
The other thing you can do is just give your handwritten notes to Andrew and let her type them, and send them out to the board members.